Name to order. Oh, forget that. And other people, there's um just one disagreement so far. Let's do the roll call.
Lee.
Present.
Catherine.
Present.
Igor.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Jerry, absent, Margaret.
Yes.
And Bonnie.
Yes. So we definitely have a call. Um, we have a public hearing. It's the first thing on our agenda. It's a proposed subdivision, property of Tara and Hans Herzog. One eighty-one Mirror Lake Road. Um, map and lot two twenty-seven eleven. Uh, description of a proposed minor subdivision and eight eighth lot to be subdivided into lots. We have a representative here. You go introduce yourself and tell us whatever you want to know.
Sure, I'm Bailey Clermont. I'm representing Hans and Tara. For this and as well as the buyers, actually. Uh, the Pope's buyers anyway. But yeah, so they, Hans approached me. He wants to get rid of that massive, nice piece of land he's got there. And I found some people that want to put some homes on it. They want to put five homes. All about one point two acre lots. Common loop drive. Individual wells and septic systems. Uh, and our plan is to leave the area as untouched as possible. We don't want to cut any trees down. We like the landscape out there. Um, visibility from the road to be as minimal as possible as well. Just kind of low impact all around.
Well, um.
So this is not two lots.
I, I want, I want to um, uh, start you right now.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, tonight's hearing is on a two lot subdivision.
Okay.
Dividing, dividing and here's, here's a map. Why don't we?
Who can you name?
Why don't we circulate these around so you can see?
So her, her, the purpose of tonight's meeting, it's just the.
Just, uh, this is a minor subdivision.
Yes.
Dividing the um lot into two lots. One with the house currently on it, which has um. What's the acreage around the existing house? How much remain with that?
The new lot, the new larger lot's going to be six point seven acres.
Yeah.
And the lot that Hans is going to retain is going to be roughly one point five acres.
Okay. Uh, okay, so you have filed the application.
I see one point two here.
One point one, sorry.
One point two?
Yep.
Okay, um, the application before us is for a minor subdivision, two lots. Um, we have the applications. The fees have been filed. The notices have gone out to the uh, butters. Can you please see?
Do you have any plans or?
Most of them back. Um, the only thing we have is this small plan. This guy.
Yeah, I know, but don't you have to sign my laws and all this?
Um, yes.
That's no doubt.
Yes.
Yes. And uh, applicant knows that before, um, it, you know. He has a final approval. He uh, has to produce the my law. The six plans. Um, but um. He had enough um information in. To um, to have the hearing, I mean, the plans. And in, in our regulations, it does not say they're going to be X by X. These are smaller than we usually get.
Yeah.
And we definitely will need.
Yes.
Bigger than this.
Um.
To um, record at the registry at ease. So um. What he was talking about, uh, as he started out. Uh, would require another hearing.
Correct.
And it would be a major subdivision. Uh, which gets involved with um, the road layout. Demonstrating the sewer and water capacities. Um.
In the, in the, so they don't know all that, so.
And all of that, so. Um, it was decided, and the best way to proceed was to. A minor verse, two lot verse.
Okay.
That takes the house out of, of the requirements of the major. Um, it, it's just simply a two lot.
And then the new, then, so then lot two becomes the possession of a new owner.
A new owner.
So then the new owner does the major subdivision for the major.
Correct.
All right.
Right. It, yeah, it was the only way to proceed. We thought about it. Uh, wishing everything could be rolled into one, but we didn't see any.
I think it's a thing.
Yeah.
So the major's going to take a while.
And this ended up.
Major takes a while and, and the property hasn't transferred.
Correct.
To.
And it couldn't.
Somebody new. That we're going to um, um, take on the major subdivision. Would be the applicant for the major. So it ends up being a two-step process. And tonight's discussion, um, just. Is uh, supposed to focus on a minor two lot. Without any speculation.
Sure.
Or, or, or predictions or forecasting about what's next.
Understand. So it seems reasonable.
Yep.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we accept the subdivision, wh- what, and Bonnie signs it once she gets all the proper plans that she reads.
If we have, I think we should ask if there's any public participation before we.
Oh, sure.
Entertain a motion in the audience or on um, the TV. Does anybody have any comments?
I have a question. I'm not sure if I, if you can hear me or not.
Yes, we can. Yeah.
Okay, so there is a, a house that is depicted on. First of all, I'm Joyce Abigav. I am in a butter. And if I remember correctly, there is a house pictured on the new lot. Is that correct? Right on the street?
We have depicted one home on the new lot.
And is, is that uh, home something that you planned to build or did you just? Put it there for illustrative purposes?
You do plan on building that.
You do plan on building that? And will that be built first before you plan to go forward with the subdivision or? Is that going to be um, built later on after the major subdivision approval?
So the idea was that if the major subdivision took too long, that we'd have something to work with to begin with. Um, so yeah, the plan is to build that first.
But it says existing dwelling here.
The exist, the one on the smaller lot is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's their, their home, their house.
Lot one is a.
And does, does he plan to keep that house or will that house be for sale as well? Did you hear the question?
A minor sub. That it becomes two lot. A house upon the second lot. Only when. Any.
Uh, my question was uh, whether Mr. Herzog is going to keep the. First home in um, his name or if that also is going to be sold.
Is it working? Is the zoom working?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know.
Looks like she lost contact, lost connection.
Okay, we have another um, person. Uh, Laura. Does Laura have any questions? Okay.
I'm sorry, the Zoom wasn't working um, while I was speaking, so I don't think I heard the answer to. The plan for the lot that um, is remaining with the house on it right now.
Oh, okay, what we have.
I'm trying to live here.
What we have before us is a two lot subdivision. One of the lots has an existing house on it. And the applicant is showing. A house on the second bigger lot. That perhaps they might build. A, a, a single home on, on the um, second larger lot. Which would be permissible under a, a minor lot subdivision. Um, after getting a building permit accord.
Sure.
And demonstrating a sewer and water capacity and all that business.
True.
Um, but it, it would still fall under the minor.
Yes.
Division criteria. If, if somebody added a house on that bigger lot, that still would uh, be acceptable under the minor. Um, subdivision rules.
Yes, I understand. I'm asking about the status of the existing home. Is Mr. Herzog planning to sell that as well to the developer or is that going to remain under his ownership?
So that will remain in Mr. Herzog's possession? He plans on living there for the foreseeable, uh, foreseeable future?
Oh, and that's his plan? If, if he didn't choose to that, to do that.
It doesn't matter.
He has.
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter. It's irrelevant for today's hearing.
It doesn't matter for this hearing, whether he's going to stay there or not.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, uh, any other question? Online or in the audience? Um, Scott, you want to make your motion?
I, during the call, I make a motion that we accept the subdivision as presented. Uh, and have resigned after you get the required plans that we.
Right.
We require.
And um, it would be a my law and, and a bigger plans.
Sure.
Um, would be required and the board is authorizing me to uh, sign it once those are received.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any questions or comments or do you want to do the roll call?
Lee?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Igor?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Margaret?
Uh, Bonnie? Yes.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you very much, people.
All right. So I will close the public hearing. And uh, call the planning board a regular meeting to order. Approval of the September ninth minutes.
Oh, tell me, watch yourself.
Stay, you want.
Don't charge yourself, Bailey.
Um, four minutes.
I motion to approve.
Okay.
Scott, come in. Is that coming?
Okay, any corrections, errors, or omissions? Vote.
Lee?
Uh, yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Igor?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yeah.
Bonnie?
Yes. Okay, um, budget for twenty twenty-five, we're supposed to. Propose a budget. Any thoughts on?
I bet we're giving the same or moving.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're going to keep it the same, except we were going to move um, the numbers around.
Right.
Having that with Scott, we've determined that no budget will be required for current activities.
So we should keep it as is?
Yeah.
All right. Do we want to vote that?
We need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make the motion.
All right, so a second?
I'll second.
Any other questions? Everybody in favor of presenting the same budget? All right. Aye. Many opposed? Okay, we have our budget. Uh, selectmen's. Anything to report?
Just getting the budget season, Mike and I are working on the road. Uh, his, his, and you know, playgrounds, all that stuff, so. Anybody has any comments, jump in, um. Going to try to, I'm trying to move on the water project on South Station Row, but I think it's too late, but we'll see. Also looking at a center beach for the uh, voice water treatment plant. But. Stay tuned.
Okay. Do we have anything from the earth excavation subcommittee?
I wasn't available, so I don't.
Okay.
Maybe next time.
All righty, uh, floodplains subcommittee.
Scott and I had a, a really good meeting last week and um. We reviewed the application requirements for joining the um. Community rating system. And the good news is that we've met about half of the requirements already.
But.
But the bad news is that there's a big hurdle that we need to get over, which is that um. One huge requirement for joining is that community buildings need to have flood insurance on them.
It may not be a your turtle. Uh, you know, we emailed her Thursday. The, the rep from the insurance company Thursday to find out if we do have it or not. She's off, of course, Friday, and she's off today and we've not heard back from her, but. Judy thinks it's a good chance we may have it because. Uh, they covered like the playground when that floated away behind the firehouse and such, but. Stay tuned, but we can't move forward uh, unless we have that. If we don't have that, then we get a, the cost benefit in that. If it costs the town twenty-five thousand dollars to have that flood insurance on the building. I don't know if it's really fair for all those, all the other taxpayers to subsidize.
Right.
The other, I mean, if it's a few thousand dollars, that's one bill, but. We have to look at it, you know, this, it is not, so.
Well, this is the right time of year.
And that, you know, that will um. You know, if we can't get that, that'll lower like the burden, flood insurance that people hopes and things like that quite a bit.
And it lowers the cost of flood insurance even for people who are not in the flood plain.
Right.
Obviously, for people who are not in a flood plain, there's less incentive to get flood insurance, but there is. Benefit to having flood insurance because there's. There are payments that would be made for a flood, even if it was a, a non-catastrophe flood, like a, a pipe broke or something like that.
So, stay tuned on that one. We'll know more in a couple of days, I think.
Um, other business um, correspondence received by the board.
I'm going to recuse myself?
Yes.
Yes. My friend over here.
Okay, um, we received correspondence, um. The, well, the town attorney received correspondence uh, regarding the cubic yard LLC Stone Dam Road. Um. Um, issue, um, and um. Tonight, um, and I felt Laura, uh, uh, our attorney felt strongly. That uh, some of the, the requests made uh, by the uh, attorney. Um, for the uh, project, the, the Stone Dam Road, Cubic Yard, uh, company representing. Um, that company, um. There were some procedural questions asked. And in general, and so that any, any vote we took tonight or any discussion. Uh, in no manner talks about the project in any shape, form, or manner at all. No decision when I said there may be a board vote required. Uh, we might want to um. Um, discuss procedural manners, not the merits of the project. We don't intend to, uh, it, it's the same if it was any applicant before us. It just happened, uh, an inquiry uh, came in that, that happens to affect. Any um, further actions that might come before us. We have no application before us. Uh, we don't even know if we're going to have one. So, um, the essence of it is. The folks um, that um, own that property. Uh, would be willing uh, to come meet with us. In a um, non-public hearing manner. Under a, a few conditions. Uh, and, and uh, that's all we're going to talk about.
How can we have a non-public?
I think, I, I, not a public here.
Oh, okay, all right.
Um, so.
Just going to say.
Yeah.
Um.
Go on.
So the, the um, I'll read, I'll read the conditions. In other words, my client is available and willing to come before the Woodstock Planning Board on December ninth. That's the date um, being suggested. Uh, subject to the following conditions. So they're willing to come here in a non-public hearing manner. Under these conditions. The purpose of the discussion will be limited to giving my client an opportunity to describe. The extent of the current and proposed use of the property and its impact on the road. And getting feedback from us, the planning board, on their view of the adequacy of Stone Dam Road and how my clients. Clients' use might impact it. That's, that's one um. Condition. The discussion will be informal and non-binding. Um, and, and very much like a preliminary conceptual. Um, you know, what we call our informational meetings. It would be no different than, than they coming to us. Under the provisions of RSA six seventy-six four two. Uh, to have an informational, ask questions and, and just um, talk in general. Uh, my client's appearance and any information shared at the appearance would in no way be construed as a waiver. Um, or otherwise be in degradation of our position. That the town of Woodstock lacks jurisdiction. In other words, that they're, they're. They're maintaining their position that, that. We do not lack jurisdiction, but they're willing to come talk to us. Uh, the meeting would be not a public hearing. And there would be no opportunity for public comment or questions. Um, and then, um. And they also, uh. Are requesting that any members of the board who has a personal interest in the property. Or Stone Dam Road or is otherwise not impartial will need to recuse themselves. In other words, um. They're asking uh, both Catherine and Lee Freeman. Who they feel have a, a conflict and should not participate in the discussions.
Makes sense.
And, and Lee has agreed.
So, so, yeah, uh, and, and just to, to make sure in all fairness. Um, you know, we need to get this rectified in, to be fair to um, the town of Woodstock.
Sure.
The town of Thornton.
Mm-hmm.
The butters and, and I don't have any problem recusing myself from this. Um, it's important and this needs to be on the record that it's not only. Woodstock boards that are asked this question, but also Thornton boards should be under the same condition. And I know there's a public hearing on Thursday in front of one of those boards. And I would hope that the same conditions would have applied to them. Doesn't affect me. I'm still going to recuse myself.
What I'm thinking though is that um.
And legal, oh, by the way, legally, I don't have to recuse myself. Uh, I did check on that. I'm not in a butter. I have no monetary, um, thing. I'm doing it just to take the high road on behalf of the town of Woodstock.
I, I think that, can I speak?
Yeah.
Sure.
I don't know if I could.
Absolutely.
I, I, yeah, I, I agree with Lee that the same conditions need to apply, to apply to them as well, specifically to members of their boards. Who are also on Stone Dam Road and not necessarily a butters.
I take a little bit different look at this. I think Laura says we do have. Jurisdiction over this. So we don't even want to talk to them until we get an application, period. Stay away.
You, you, you state, and Scott stated that initially.
No, that's what I still say, but that's my.
That, and that's.
I don't want to even see them.
That's why I did not do any email poll of all of us. I'm doing it right here in public.
It's not legal.
Each one of us has an equal vote as to whether we agree to these conditions or not.
Okay.
Um, and.
I'm not opposed, saying I oppose the project even. I'm not saying that.
Right, yep, but and you're, you're absolutely right. One of the things, one of the conditions I am adamantly opposed to. And that is not allowing um, public.
Comments.
I mean, that, yeah, that, that is contrary to everything that this country was built on. And it's contrary to the way we, we as a planning board have, have treated anybody in the past. I adamantly disagree with it. And fortunately, I think if we take a vote, I think the entire board can do it as a um. Uh, I don't want to say a policy, but um, just as a past practice, you know, to, to.
I, I, I've been calling it procedural or our, our rules of procedure.
Kath needs to, to recuse herself. I mean, if she chooses to, that's fine. I'm certainly not going to for that vote.
Right. I, I don't think, I, I don't think Catherine has to recuse herself for voting on, on our procedure.
Right.
All, all we're discussing tonight is procedure, whether this is that project or any project.
Any project. I'm not, I'm not necessarily against this.
Procedure is that we welcome. I see. We welcome public input. Uh, we welcome public input. Uh, we, we, we always let people in, in the audience. Talk about it, any subject that's on topic. I mean, you can't come here and talk about. Um, something that's got nothing to do with planning, zoning, but we're always open to people's comments. So. I, and Laura agreed with me. Uh, she's on vacation, uh, but I, I, I told her that I felt more comfortable with us. Taking a position uh, in, in establishing. A, a policy or procedure, and I, I don't mind the other conditions of coming here. I think we might learn something and we might, we might um, resolve some things, issues. We might learn something. So we always welcome people coming to talk to us and ask questions. We love informational meetings. We learn something. But I, I, my vote would be um. To not, to not agree to. No public participation with, with public in the room.
Yeah, but certainly he's individual, right? Not respond to any questions he doesn't himself want to answer, but. I don't feel that we can exclude the public from our meetings. That's not really.
I agree.
Yeah.
We're representatives, we were voted in by people of Woodstock. We are representatives of people of Woodstock. I mean. What, we could do a big, big hearing behind the closed door? That's, that's not.
To me, if he wanted to exonerate this thing, he should just put the application.
Mm-hmm.
And then make his case. And we say yes or no?
That would make it a lot easier for everyone.
Everyone. And I'm again, I'm, so I'm not totally, I'm not saying against them or.
But that's his choice. I, I mean, we have no application before, so we have nothing to.
And if it's informational, that we would do that before somebody.
We would anyway.
Right.
I'm just saying.
Maybe people come in rather than spend money and time and effort designing something that we're not going to like. Um, we always encourage them to come um, discuss it with us.
And, and that certainly makes sense as well, if he was coming in under that context to, to prepare an application afterwards.
Exactly, and I wouldn't want to stifle his, his ability to come in and, and tell us whatever he wants to tell us either.
That's correct, because part of this is being fair to Cubic as well, you know?
Exactly. So I think um, the only thing we're doing tonight is we are not at all going to talk about. The project implication or even uh, forecast whether there's going to be one or not.
We don't know.
We're just going to uh, welcome an informational meeting if. Somebody wants to come talk to us and tell us something. Um. But so do we want to go on record of, of that being a? And I think it's consistent with the way we've always.
Yeah, I think we, I think we should take a vote on it.
Yeah, I do too. All right. Does somebody want to make a motion? That we agree to these conditions?
I'm going to continue to abstain from and be recusing myself because I am in a butter and I just don't want there to be any.
Sure.
Visual of any sort of O C R.
Yeah.
Okay, then that's your, that's your choice and I understand it. Um, so does somebody want to make a motions that we, we agree and we welcome um. An informational conceptual meeting, um, but that we do not agree that um. We will not hear from, his wording is. We do agree, it's not a public hearing, that's for sure. Um, but we do not agree with there would be no opportunity for public comment or questions. That's the problem.
Okay, if he's not going to answer the public questions, I don't know. Anyway.
But yeah, but it, it, you know, you certainly would allow um, the public to rebut.
Sure, okay.
And to go on record.
Right, and, and that's, that's part of it is going on record and rebut.
Um, and then it's up to the um.
Kathy, when you do a roll call, could you call me last? Excellent.
Okay, are we clear on what we're voting on, that we, that we, we will not restrict an opportunity for public comment?
We actually have a motion on the table.
Okay, and do we?
Well, I make, I make a motion that we, uh, allow them to come to that meeting, to the December ninth meeting. But we, we cannot accept their, we, we can't invite them if they're not willing to have public participation at the meeting. Something like that.
Yeah.
You can reword it.
Why don't we say this, that they're welcome to um, to come to our meeting and to present what they like and. On the understanding that all of our meetings are open to public participation.
Yeah, that's great.
Very good.
Much better than what I said.
Very good. And that is how we are. We are that way. When, this, this is not a different rule for this situation. This is. How we do business.
Do we need to go on record or so?
Oh, right. So let's vote.
Do this first. Because that's a personal decision.
Okay.
To refuse.
Okay, um. Let's vote. Well, I think Margaret.
Margaret made it. I'll second it.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Margaret. Uh, made the motion and Scott seconded it. All right, let's. Margaret, uh, made the motion, and Scott seconded it. All right, let's vote. Igor?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Cheryl?
I mean, oh, sorry.
Um, Margaret?
Yeah.
Bonnie?
Yes.
And Lee?
Abstain.
Thank you. All right. Um, so we will rely on that.
And, and to, to Igor's point, um, when I recuse myself, and I will, um, that's a personal decision, not one that the board can even vote on, that's because of some elected official, so.
Well, you're not in a butter.
I'm not in a butter. I'm not legally required to, seeing it's, it would be the same as if I sat on a school board and I was making a decision, and I had a child in the school.
Right.
And that's the, the best analogy I can.
And when the time comes, I mean, that's for you to decide. You know, I never, it was clear with Kathy.
Yep.
Um, but I, I never, I never opened my mouth once.
Well, no, and I, and I.
I've never opened my mouth once.
And here's the thing, I fully, I fully understand the reasoning, and I don't disagree with it. Okay, but it has to be fair, you know, and I, I mean, the thing is, I've known Candy, but I was thinking about this for over thirty years. We haven't been friends. We've been on opposite sides. We happen to be neighbors. I've known Johnny Cubic for twenty-five years, you know? I've known Kath for twenty years. Um, these are all good people, and we all have to do what's good for the town of Woodstock, you know? And we, you know, and it, it has to be fair.
And I think anyone's gotta think about their.
That's right, and, and that's why when, when, um, John Cubic's attorney came to us with these conditions, all I could think of was, you know, we're taking the high road. I, I truly believe that all the town's boards, whether it be Woodstock Selectment, if it ends up there, or Thornton's Planning Board or ZBA, all have to meet these same standards. It's the high road, and that's how we all work together. So.
And it's tricky choosing when and when not to make any yourself, because we all know each other, and we all work together, and we all we all are in and out of each other's businesses all the time.
Right.
Because that's the nature of living in a small town.
You know, I, I was, I, I, I saw Johnny Cubic's mother today at her, her work. I happened to have to be in there. Now, it's like, hi, Lee, hi, Danny. So it's the world we live in.
Yep.
It is. Okay, um, the second thing on the.
I'm gonna take my seat.
Yes, I'm sorry, thank you. The other was an email request for information from an authority regarding the public hearing. That was on the, um, Herzog subdivision that we heard before. And I did, um, talk to the Butters, and there seemed to be, I don't know, the Butters is, it seems to no longer be in. Uh, yeah, I, I explained to her, I thought sufficiently, and answered her question, so, um, the only other thing is, um, our next meeting is supposed to be November, whatever it is.
Eighteenth?
Eighteenth, and I'm not gonna be here. We're not gonna have a.
I would be here.
You would be here. So do we want to meet on the eleventh, which is a holiday, or, or Thanksgiving week?
I think, Bonnie, why don't we just wait and see if we've got anything for the agenda or not?
Right, because the ninth is soon thereafter.
Yeah, if, if, I mean, if there's nobody needs anything, then that just cancel the month, that month, for that month.
Right.
That's what I think.
Right, I, I agree with that.
I mean, if we need to meet, we can meet.
The ninth is early in December, so.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
I mean, if someone has something.
Yeah, if something comes up and somebody, uh, wants a hearing, um.
And can do the third gaze and do all that stuff.
We'll try to accommodate them.
We can try to do it.
All right, um, any public participation?
I have one more thing I would like to bring up, bring up, if that's okay. Margaret, the meetings that I've been attending, the hazard, uh.
Yeah.
Oh, gosh, I missed that.
Um, we need extra people to come because we have to accrue X amount of dollars worth of hours.
And Scott, this is particularly true of people like Mike and Judy that work your salary because they count for more than we do.
Oh, the hazard mitigation.
Yes, yes.
So when's the next one?
What's the schedule for the next one?
Well, just emailing.
They keep sending out emails to us, and, oh, sometimes I'm really, I'm really looking from the planning board that's gonna mark this.
I was logging. All right, well, I.
It would be great if more people could come so we can accrue that, that dollar value sooner and they can pass the test.
I didn't realize that, okay, let me.
Yeah, we need to get.
I can work on, uh, getting, it's, hopefully it's after the election.
Mike in particular, they need information from them.
Increase the planning board salary.
Okay, so I will make sure.
I've been going to all of them. It's actually pretty interesting.
He and I will.
So let's.
If Andre, Andre can go get, he would be a helper as well.
I can try, yeah.
Let's get, get some folks there.
So, yeah, email, I, I, I do get her emails. Jennifer, right?
Yeah.
Killing him.
You're gonna know.
I'm, I'm, you're gonna know, I'm like, you can.
Let's make sure. Let's make sure we get people there.
All right, I'll, I'll make a definite effort.
Anything else?
It just, we've got a lot of boy that's like.
Well, can do a term?
Oh, you stole it. I'll second.
Thank you.
You were waiting for that.